And I really want to start with you two, because I don't know you. Okay, so what I'd like is just a real quick, who, you know, what you guys bring to the table, you know, and beyond the, "I want to serve." We know, I would hope you want to serve, and we go, we go right past that, if you know what I mean. So Nick, why don't you just-
Mick with an M, sorry.
Mick, I'm sorry. Mick, why don't you start out and just give me a quick, who are you, and why are you in this mess?
Okay, sure.
You know, what kind of, you know, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, um, so I've lived in Oakland for the last ten years, maybe a little more. And I've lived in California all my life, I grew up in Stockton, California. I studied forestry at Humboldt State University. The last seven years, I have been working at a company called Intuit, and I work for their Innovation and Advanced Technology Group. And what we do there is we help the product creators actually think of innovative solutions and technologies for small businesses and consumers. You're probably familiar with Intuit, with QuickBooks and through tax and so forth.
I was an early adopter, twenty-eight years ago.
Yeah, so one of the, one of the things we do-
Before they were Intuit.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
When they were Quicken.
Yeah. Um, so, you know, one of the things we do to solve problems at our company is we actually work directly with the consumers. We don't design things without involving, involving the consumers. It's called customer-driven design. Um, I think that, like, you know, one of the things I can bring to the table is a unique set of skills around problem solving. I oftentimes build systems for multiple stakeholders that oftentimes have different interests, sometimes opposing interests. Um, I manage my resources for my department, and I'm able to build these innovative solutions for, for our customers that ultimately makes the company money. Obviously, the city is in the business of making money, and it's a different thing, but I think that, you know, the organizational skills, management skills I've developed over the last fifteen years, being in leadership positions in high-tech companies and public institutions, will bring something to the table. And I think that the big difference between me and a lot of other people that are running for the races, I consider myself just an ordinary citizen. Um, I think that because I'm not raising any money, I'm not going to be accepting money from any of the, anybody that's doing business with the city, for instance, that I could better represent all of Oakland instead of just those that are fortunate enough to afford campaign contributions.
Carol Lee.
Okay.
See, I got, I did it right the first time.
You did?
Yeah.
I'm proud of you.
I hang on to it so I can actually not screw it up later, yeah.
Okay, um, of course, I'm not an incumbent as well. I'm running for at-large for a variety of reasons. Um, one of which is that I am a native of Oakland. Uh, and I graduated from Oakland Public Schools. My husband and I raise our children here. Um, I received my BA, master's degrees from Cal State Hayward. Uh, I also am a small business owner, educator-
What, in what?
Excuse me?
Your degrees are in what?
Uh, my degree, my BA is in human development, and my master's is in public administration. So, in terms of organizational development, as an emphasis. Uh, I'm also a past, um, uh, former nonprofit executive where I created a number of critical services for, for the elderly, for our youth, uh, as well as for parents. I'm a former Oakland School Board member where I managed, uh, half a billion-dollar budget. Uh, and when I entered-
When you're on the board, I might not know.
That's okay. Uh, when I took office in ninety-three, the, the board was under, the district was under state receivership. When I left in ninety-seven, it had a ten-million-dollar budget. Um, I believe that the fact that we have the crime rate, crime rate that we have is unacceptable, that we are essentially, uh, tale of two cities. One in which we're the fifth in the world in terms of our art scene and, and restaurants, but fifth also in the nation in terms of our crime. Uh, we also have our police department that's under, almost under state, state federals.
Yeah, we'll get to issues more, I just want your background right now.
Oh, okay, and also, okay, well, let me, let me, let me do it then. And then also, um, for the past twenty-three years, I've worked as a volunteer to make Oakland a better place to live, work, and grow through Oakland Civic Pride, uh, which is a, a youth leadership civic engagement program. I also, during that same period, served on a number of community boards and committee, committees that worked on, you know, major projects like the Army Base. You know, we worked on the, of having the city implement an Office on Aging, the Higher Oakland First Policy. So, uh, my community experience background is also, I think, very critical. My people skills, the fact that I've run organizations, that I've developed critical services, that when I got on the school board, that there was a lot of disconnect between the, the district and the staff and the board members, and we were able to actually pass a bond measure for the first time in twenty, twenty-five years because the, of the, uh, focus that we had on making sure that we got the business of the district done. So, I'm a community activist, um, long-term resident, I love Oakland, and the, the other thing that I think that seems to me-
Yeah, that, I just needed a little bit of sense of it, right?
Okay, well, you have it.
Um, I'm gonna start out now. You both know the issues we care about. And just so you guys understand where we're coming from editorialally, there are two big issues in the city as far as we're concerned. Crime and, and slash budget. And they're totally linked. And I've spent time talking to both of you about the money and the unfunded liabilities of the city, and the long-term planning of the city or the lack thereof. Help me understand, let me start with you and Nasser, and then we'll work right down, you know, what these guys react to it too. But help me understand, knowing what you know about what we care about. Because, you know, unlike the past groups, I don't think I need to educate either of you guys what we care about, right?
Mm-hmm.
Why you're better than the other on the issue? You know, I mean, we're, why, between the two of you, we're looking for who's gonna be better on fiscal reality and dealing with, dealing with unfunded liabilities so that there's money to pay costs and control benefits? So, and you know, you both have talked the talk. Help me understand why one of you is gonna walk the talk better? Okay? Or walk the walk?
Of course, thank you for the opportunity, but, uh, I don't think, I don't, I don't disagree with you a little bit. I don't think the both of us walk the walk and-
No, no, I'm not saying you do. You both talk the talk. Let me, let me just start with that.
Talk the talk.
That's all I'm saying, I'm trying to understand why you think, either of you think you're gonna walk the walk better than the other.
Because I have walked it, I have, I have, I have even very clear, I have been the, actually, probably the lonely voice for years now. Now that it's an election year and a campaign, uh, I think my colleagues start talking about pensions and liabilities, but I've been doing it with you and with many other people, anybody that could listen to, to, about the incredible liability that we have. I have, uh, I've been the one that actually take on the system, and that will be, uh, police, or that will be, uh, the, uh, my brothers and sisters in the unions to, to get them to understand that, that the liabilities that we have and that they have to pay into their, into their pensions. Um, I, I think that for years, and that's the reason why I think it's good that we incumbent, because we have a record, how we have voted, and how we have articulated the issue of the pension. And I think that we are very different on that, uh, and we have a different track record on that. Uh, the reality is-
Give me the specifics of the difference.
Specifically, that I demanded, that I pushed for, for the Police Officers Union to pay into the pension before anybody else did. Uh, I was the most adamant person to make sure that they will pay into it. Number two, I think I introduced a budget, actually, two years ago, and, and this year, for that matter, that included the contributions, not only the police, but increased the contribution, uh, from, from SEIU to, to our pension for their payments, for pay, paid their way into their pensions. Uh, I was the one that actually put a budget together that included that. My colleague voted for it this time around, but I was the one that actually put it, uh, together in order to make sure that that, that happened.
And when it included the, I'm sorry-
No, go ahead.
They included, the distinction, it included what now?
Included, the budget two years ago that included that police officers will pay their, their nine percent
Their nine percent.
Into, into their pension. And when it comes to, to public safety, I think that, that I think that, again, I have been the, probably the lonely voice with actual proposals in front of the council to, to deal with the incredible challenge that we face of crime and the loss of lives. We have, uh, this year so far, I think, up to today, is eighty-eight homicides. And, and the rhetoric for years has been the same, you know, by, by the city council and by these mayors. Uh, both mayors, the previous one and this one, when it comes to do something to actually, uh, give the police the tools that are necessary to, to reduce crime and fight crime.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna tease this out some more. Let me let Rebecca respond, and then we'll come down to you guys. You know, and then we're gonna tease this out with some specifics, let's see. So, go ahead with that.
Sure, um, and thanks for the question. So, as, as you obviously know, the financial problems of Oakland have been in the making for twenty years and more. And, um, as Bill Clinton would say, "It takes some brass to blame someone else for what you did." Uh, the ninety-seven swap that my challenger orchestrated increased Oakland's bond debt in order to give extra money to other projects, not just to refinance the debt. The two thousand three, two thousand four cycle budget negotiations that dramatically increased the benefits was also a key component to why the unfunded liability exploded so dramatically. And so, the, the claim that, that his track record has been one of pushing back against this is actually not historically true. Um, in any case, now we are here today, and we have the dilemma of the unfunded liability. I fully and actively and completely supported the concessions that we recently adopted in the budget. The budget proposal of the prior cycle that I had submitted together with council members Schaff, Nadell, and Kurnahan also included all the exact same concessions. What was different about the budget proposal I submitted was that it did not further reduce the size of the police force. That was the big difference between our budget proposals. Uh, but mine also included the exact identical labor concession financials that his proposal included.
There's the furlough difference too.
Correct. Oh, right, that he proposed one day a year less furlough. Uh, and so, when we look at the question of how we got into this problem with the increased unfunded liability from the prior rounds of labor negotiations with the Raiders' Deal and the additional bond debt put on the bond swap in order to fund the Raiders' Deal, all of those were things that my challenger was the one who orchestrated, was council president, putting those through. So, there's still a question, of course, where do we go from here? Because I still share in the responsibility for fixing the problem going forward.
Okay, so we'll come to that in a second. We're gonna go to where we go from here, and we're gonna talk about contribution rates going forward. We're gonna talk about, uh-
And certainly have more to say about policing, but I'll wait till you-
Long-term budgeting, we can talk about policing. Mick, do you have thoughts on how we got on-
Sure, I mean, I think there's-
On where you'll be and, you know, where you are on the issues that you care about.
Sure, I mean, I think, you know, one issue that's, you know, not anyone's fault on the city council is just the fact that city council people serve for a very limited amount of time, like in a particular term.
Like what?
They, they serve for a limited amount of time in a term, so those, those amounts of time are much smaller than the liabilities that they'll build up, like, you know, making deals on pension plans or any other long-term thing. So I think that, you know, it's really easy for a city council person to get on the council and look at their other obligations, whether that be from other, like, campaign donors or people that are helping them, moving that money over, which is my understanding exactly what's happened with the pensions in Oakland. Um, you know, they're, they're not following their obligations, and it's really easy to turn around now and say like, "Oh, we have to go after the workers and get them to concede all these things." Because, you know, they, they, they followed through on their agreement. They worked the amount of time they had, you know, they, they did what they're supposed to, and it was the city that was at fault, this particular case. That doesn't solve the problem now, but I think it's like, you know, the easier thing is to blame the workers.
How do you think we got into this?
My understanding is, um, that there was, um, a parcel tax that was put on that was supposed to fund the pension plans, and that parcel tax never actually went to fund those pensions. They diverted that money into other places. Much, much the same way they've done with other, other parcel taxes, like Measure Y and things like that. They've ended up not fully funding Measure Y. Um, and I think that the city has an obligation, when the voters agree to pay for something, to actually follow through on, on that. And I think in this particular case, the pensions did not get funded in that case. And then we have to turn around and then have bond measures, so now we're in debt. And those bond measures, we're gonna have interest payments on those, and it's just gonna kick the can further down the line.
Carol Lee?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna go back to my school board experience. When I said, when I took office in ninety-three, that the board, the district was under state receivership, and when I left it had a-
Yeah, I know, but, but, but I'm really, I'm really interested in, you know, your thoughts on the city, how the city got into its mess, you know?
No, I, I know I'm gonna use, yeah. Uh, part of, um, uh, how we got out of it was really looking, uh, at how we negotiated with our unions and not pitting, you know, one union against the other. Uh, also, um, I think that, um, in terms of fiscal responsibilities, we have to, of course, maintain a particular reserve, but one of the strategies that we use to keep us more fully informed of our budgeting is that we actually had an independent audit office that reported directly to us, uh, which was independent of, of the, of the districts. Um, I think, um, looking at ways in which, ways in which decisions were made, um, the, the economic climate changed, for example, the Goldman Sachs Agreement, or the housing downturn, and all those really impacted, you know, the budget. But at the same time, we have to look at maintaining, um, uh, long-term planning, like Options A and Options B. What do we do if this happens, and what if we do if, if something else happens? Uh, Measure Y was really a disappointment, or not fully implementing Measure Y was a fully, uh, was a, really a disappointment to the, to the voters. Uh, one of the, the things that I'm hearing as I'm campaigning is that if we expect to pass another parcel tax, we have to regain the public trust. And that was another, that's another, uh, issue that has to be dealt with. Because currently, voters are mad.
Okay, I got you. So, let me, let me start, you know, let me start with you, Rebecca. With the where do we go from here question. And, you know, I mean, let's be clear what we're talking about. How much do you understand the unfunded liabilities of the city right now? Retirement unfunded liabilities?
The retirement unfunded liabilities are four hundred million in the, in the one fund, and a couple hundred million in the other fund. Right, so we've got the Pefers is, is in the four hundreds of millions. We also have Calpers, and then we also have OPEB, the other post-employment liability.
So, what's the total, total bill?
At least six hundred million. And then there's also the problem of the fact that the health insurance commitment is a commitment that continues to grow in cost every year at a rate higher than inflation because it includes the post-employment healthcare benefits, which has a potential for the continuing escalating dollar amount as the private health insurance-
Let me, before we go further. Nasser, how much do you see that, uh, unfunded liability?
Pushing one and a half billion, you know, it's about four hundred and eighty-some million on Pefers, and I think it's about three ninety, close to four hundred on Calpers. And the, uh, and the post-retirement is, all depends who you, all depends on the numbers they're looking at presented by us to, to, from finance. You're looking at probably half a billion, so you're looking at probably one and a half billion dollars, close to that.
You guys have any thoughts on this, how much it is?
I, you know, I actually have a thought about it, it's kind of a side thought on this.
No, no, I'm really curious.
Okay, then I'm, then I'm, then I'm with those.
Do you have a frown on how much it is?
No.
Okay. My calculation is two point two.
Including OPEB.
Including OPEB.
Mm-hmm.
OPEB's actually a smaller part of it. It ain't six hundred, man.
And Pefers? Oh, no, you're not talking about, you're talking about Pefers, Calpers-
You said the total bill is six hundred million.
Oh, not including OPEB?
Even-
Okay, but including OPEB, yeah.
Well, OPEB doesn't get you much further up there. Just so we understand what we, what we were talking about.
What numbers.
The numbers that we're talking about, folks. I was asking about OPEB, I was asking about Calpers, I was asking about Pefers. I mean, and when, you, you know, I mean, let's just, so you, just so we understand the exact numbers so you guys have a break on this. I'm surprised you guys, you know, and Nasser, you're at least in the right ballpark.
Okay, Carol Lee?
You're at least in the right ballpark. You know, but my calculation is five twenty on OPEB, four ninety-four on Pefers, five sixteen on Calpers, safety, six ninety on Calpers, miss. Two point two. Total pension will pay about four hundred and forty-one. Divide six and a half years pension will pay.
Yep.
So, we've been writing about this, I've been writing about this on my column, we've been writing about this in the editorial page for three years now. Why aren't we figuring along?
Me? Well, there's a, there's a few things that, of course, we've recently done that haven't yet trickled all the way through the system, right? So there's the recent changes to the active pay, which then translates into changes to the Pefers liability, which we had to, uh, work to get that included, and that's only recently been changed in terms of the Pefers calculus. So that should be moderately reducing the Pefers outstanding unfunded liability. Not by enough.
No, it's not by enough, right?
Marginally. Uh, the other thing that we recently did is the new tier for the new hires. So again, that is a long-term solution, that is not a short-term solution. That does not affect our problem today. All that affects is what then comes in the future, as those new people come in.
That only affects your normal cost, correct?
Excuse me? Yes.
That only affects your normal cost.
And only going forward. In, in other words, as new employees come in, the cost per new employee of the future unfunded liability will go down as, under, as the new employees come in under the new plan.
Okay.
So, again, that is not huge, and that's not today. Um, but fundamentally, the gap has been growing for decades. And the gap has been growing for decades for several different reasons. Uh, part, of course, having to do with decisions that were made in ninety-seven, decisions that were made in two thousand and three that increased the gap. Uh, it also, of course, has to do with the downturn in the economy, but that's not enough to just say that caused part of it. That certainly was a big contributing factor, uh, but that's, that's not good enough, and we still have to actually deal with it. So, one of the council actions that I passed together with a group of other council members, including Schaff and Kurnahan, is to require that the bond debt expiring next year for the convention centers, that that cost savings be devoted to these unfunded liabilities, and that we will not take a five-year payment holiday, but rather begin to put money aside for these unfunded liabilities, starting next year.
Isn't that all in the plan, when the Pefers bonds were floated? To dedicate the, as the bonds get paid off for the other things, to take that money? Isn't that, isn't that, wasn't that in the justification for floating the Pefers bonds?
It was part of the discussion, but I and four other colleagues put that in the form of an actual council action to give it as a directive that that would actually be done. So that's part of it. Of course, part of it is that bonds were refinanced years ago to add debt for other purposes beyond the pension and post-employment liability. But, but here we are, we still have to fix it now.
Here we are, here we've been for the last few years.
Yes.
We're roughly the same unfunded liability we were at three years ago when I started writing about this.
Correct. And so, no, it absolutely is a huge problem. And it is one that, as we've taken these different steps, so for example, the concessions that we negotiated with the unions, that helps the fiscal picture. Because Pefers is calculated based on actives, when actives change, Pefers liability changes. Now, that's not true for Calpers, because Calpers is calculated differently. But that is true for Pefers, as you know, but not all your viewers and, and readers know that. Um, and so, we have taken some steps that over time begin to ratchet down that liability, but absolutely, it's not enough. I mean, we're gonna have to continue to take further steps like that. So, for example, to continue to make payments every year, right? To not take a payment holiday. When we look at the prior round-
We'll come, we'll come, we'll come back to that, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Nasser?
You know, it's interesting, I mean, we, it was like pulling teeth. For the last several years, uh, it was like, like a tug-of-war to convince the council, to convince most of my colleagues that, to fight the Pefers, okay? And it's many articles that many of you have written about it. Uh, we actually had to take it to court. I was the one that pushed them to take it to court because of the overpayment of about eight million dollars. The reason why we have those results, because I, I pushed for those results. Yes, we have, it's throughout the years that we have made mistakes, and we have done some things that, uh, in retrospect, were not, um, uh, based on the financial circumstances of the time, and, and all of those issues are, are definitely, we could have done, uh, overall, you know, a more careful analysis of what, or some of the bonds that we have issued in the past.
Let me ask a question, let me ask you a question for all of you. And let me start with you, Nasser. Under AB three forty, candidly, it doesn't do much for you guys unless, uh, you guys decide you want to do something.
You want to do it?
Unless you decide you want to do something. And perhaps the most significant thing that AB three forty does is it allows you in twenty eighteen to impose a employee payment of fifty percent of the normal cost, up to, for safety, twelve percent. Are you gonna follow what I just said?
Mm-hmm.
You guys follow this, are you okay? Okay. Frankly, for your fire, you're already there, right?
Mm-hmm, above there.
You're above there. Should police go to twelve percent?
Yes, none of the, so it's with twelve percent.
Pardon?
Yes, and the, and the non-small should definitely, based on financial situations, go to the features.
Yeah, well, actually, you probably, AB three forty probably doesn't get you anything with your non-small. Because it gives you a nine, it was a, it was a bogus, it was a bogus-
Collectively bargaining.
It really didn't do anything, yeah.
Collectively bargaining, it does.
Well, it, it gives you the ability to get them to do more, that's true. But it doesn't even set a standard that's above where you're already at, frankly. You know, but right, it does allow you to collectively bargain more. But, but as far as you're concerned, twelve percent on police is yes.
Yes.
That's certainly something I'm open to, and I think the question that we would have at the bargaining table would be between, uh, changing the plan to cheaper plans balanced with changing contributions. So I think in the negotiations, right, and obviously, this is-
Changing the plan to a cheaper plan. So are you suggesting a change for current employees going forward in their accrual rates?
Well, I know current employees with a, with a bound plan, we can't change them, right? We can't impose that on them.
Well, you can't impose them on them. I mean, there are even arguments you could collectively bargain that, but that's a, that's yet to be done.
Right.
But my question to you is, absent, let's put it this way, absent a change in three for three of fifty for current employees, for current police, should they be paying twelve percent?
I certainly think that should be on the table in the negotiations, and the way that I would imagine doing that is to lay out, here's the dollar amount of that savings. And then in the negotiations, what happens is sometimes a bargaining unit will come back and say, "We have this alternate proposal of how to achieve that dollar amount savings." Uh, so for example, um, the question about whether they are paying in more versus, uh, obviously, taking other cuts in other pay rather than pension changes. So when we went to the bargaining table- So when we went to the bargaining table in the last round, what we said to the unions is, we need ten percent cost savings. And different unions actually came to different negotiated conclusions with the city. So for example, with the OPOA, that came almost entirely through the form of the pension pay-in, right, going up to the nine percent. And the strategy that I would imagine with the negotiations is to talk about, well, here's the dollar amount. And that some unions, you know, some people took pay cuts, some people took additional pension contributions. The firefighters had a change in their shift hours in a way that saved money. And so, the way that I would imagine the negotiating happening would be, here's a dollar amount target, and then there's often a back and forth.
Are all dollar amount savings the same?
Well, they're not all the same in the sense that some continue for years into the future, and some are short-term. So when you negotiate, for example, when the, when prior decisions were made to increase the pension plan, right, to go from, say, fifty-five to fifty as the year at which you could take your plan, that obligation creates a financial cost for years to come.
The, the dollar savings you're talking about in any given point, and what you're talking about is a second tier, right? Well, I'm talking about for the existing employees.
Oh, right. So for existing employees, for example, say there's a.
I mean, isn't there a tru, isn't that exactly the problem if you start creating a second tier to get all your savings and not make the current employees pay more, that what you've done is you shifted the cost within the workers?
Oh, right. No, I'm not, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm not proposing that we take the cost in the second tier. What I'm proposing, just in the second tier, I mean, the second tier is a separate thing that saves money for the future. In terms of current fiscal year savings, or the fiscal year savings of the year that we're negotiating, some unions will say, will take less in pay versus the pension contribution. So those, those two items are not about a second tier. Those are both about the current workforce having different options for ways to save them.
But, but let's say check in different pay, take a cut in pay versus a cut in contribution rates, okay, for a second.
Right.
What are the long-term implications of those two issues, the trade-offs of those two?
Oh, well, it depends, obviously, what the amount is and whether the amount then is, if it's for public safety, whether then it has implications into Pefers. Because when you have savings in pay of active sworn personnel, then it also is calculated as a reduction in the Pefers payment, right? Now, that's not true for the non-sworn pension system. So absolutely, when, when that calculus would be done, we would have to actually run the numbers on the various proposals. Because depending on which bargaining unit it is, it could potentially have different cost savings or cost implications for the other components. And then for the workers, I think there is sometimes a question about whether they prefer more money now or more money later in terms of, you know.
Wouldn't they, for the most part, prefer to take a pay cut rather than set a precedent? Because they'll, because they figure they can bargain for this money later?
Absolutely. And then the issue, the issue just given them a smokescreen. The problem is that it's, it's bigger cost. When you say, okay, ten percent, and then you, and you employees tell me how do you wanna take it, either it's gonna be furloughs, it's gonna be different things that still increase their pay, and it still increases the cost of, of the, of the pension, it still increases the cost of payroll, so. It's a different, and it's, it's normally, yes. If I was a union person negotiating, yes. Give me a ten percent, and I figure out a way that it also don't impact me in, as much as if, if you're just a straight pay guy. Because reduces the payroll, reduces the amount of tax, and all of those issues. I think that that's one of the mistakes that we, that the administration has made, and that they propose with that. So, and, and when it comes to Pefers, I think that, which is the only pension that is tied to actives, it has not worked. There's a reason why we have to go to court, because the reductions on the actives.
But you did get that.
But it did, but it did work. It did work. Excuse me, it did work, and that was part of why it was a strategy that saved more money than just the savings on the actives.
No, because it's, to this day, still have not, we have still not have one cent yet, so, so, because the board.
But you will get it with a court settlement, with a court victory, right?
I, I hope so. But the court, the court left vague, no, no, the court left very vague, how is it gonna be repaid? So, so the board has to, is going to make a decision, how is it gonna be repaid? Which they can propose ten dollars a, a month for the next hundred years, okay, so, but, yes.
So they could wrap it into that front end. They could smooth it out.
They're gonna try that.
Do you guys have thoughts? Are you following this? Do you have thoughts on this?
I, I, I wouldn't oppose a twelve percent rate.
And actually, one of the first recommendations I made was parity, pension parity.
What does that mean?
In, in terms of more, the police and fire paying more into the pension contribution as the other union, unions are doing.
Well, actually, they are paying more than they were before.
Right.
My question really was whether we tweak up police even further.
Yes. Does it, yes.
And in, in terms of the, the negotiating strategy, one of the things that often happens too is a, is each bargaining unit will wanna know what the other bargaining unit is doing or getting, right? That's one of the, the dynamics that tends to happen. And so currently, sworn personnel are actually having a higher contribution. Though it depends if you take it, if you calculate it as a percentage of the pension cost. If it's as a percentage of the pension cost, then they're not, then they're not paying a higher contribution.
What, what are you saying? They're higher than what, than miscellaneous?
What I'm saying is fire is at thirteen percent, right? So they're paying a higher percentage of their paycheck.
Than, than police.
Than police or non-sworn.
Yeah, well, non-sworn's a whole different issue, right?
Right.
They're a different group, they have different grades. That's a different issue, right?
Right.
Because their percentage of the normal cost is.
Right. But part of why it's become such a problem as a percentage of normal cost, even as their percentage of their payroll that goes into pension has gone up, is because the total pension cost has gone up. So the pension cost, as, as the total goes up, so in other words, you take, if a union is now at thirteen, right, but then the cost has gone up, so that thirteen is no longer fifty percent of the total cost, even though at a certain point historically it had been. But as the cost of the pensions to the city total has gone up, then the worker contribution is a lower share of the normal cost of the pension, even though, even if they're not paying less numerically.
They're paying a smaller percentage of the total costs.
Exactly. Even though they could, you could see a situation where they could be paying more in absolute dollars, but it's a smaller share of the percentage of the pension cost as those costs have gone up over time.
So. So help me understand your understanding, 'cause you've sort of rolled your eyes or looked a little bewildered when I started to distinguish the normal cost and unfunded liability, how you understand the difference.
Well, we have payments that we have to make year by year. We have the, the amount that accrues, or rather, the amount that accrues owing year by year, right, whether it's paid in that year or not. There is an amount that, that comes every year as a billed amount into the pension system. And that.
And that is?
Hmm?
And that is?
And that's the normal cost.
Okay.
And the unfunded liability is the accrued over time, long-term amount that is needed and will, that will be needed over time to pay out. And so, in other words, the unfunded liability is a, is a debt today, but the people collecting it aren't needing to collect it all today. So it's an amount of money that today is a debt, but that will be, in terms of the, the other side of that debt, the payments to the retirees, those don't all happen this year. The unfunded liability does not refer to this year's outgoing pension payments. It refers to the accrued long-term gap between what is available and what is owing. But not on a current year basis, on an overtime basis. And so each year, there's an amount.
This is, I'm trying to underst, I want you to take another cut at this, Rebecca, because, because for both of you, this is, this is an important question for us to understand, whether you guys are clear on this too. So take another cut at that funding.
So we have assets, and we have liabilities.
Mm-hmm.
And we have a gap between them.
Right.
And.
Present value.
And so the present value of that gap is the unfunded liability, to put it in the basic.
And the liability is for what?
And the liability is for the, what we owe the retirees.
For?
On a going-forward basis. For the, the payments that we will have to be making to the retirees, which come from a fund for their.
Which were earned when?
Oh, which were earned when they were working.
Going forward or in the past?
The unfunded liability represents the gap between the accrued obligations and the accrued assets. For the retirees.
And accrued, already accrued or to be accrued in the future?
Oh, the, the amounts based on what is owed based on the current contract status of folks. So it doesn't include potential future hires under their future plans. But it includes what we currently have a legal obligation to pay. So some of those folks are already retired. Some of those folks are not yet retired, but have an accrued legally binding obligation, which then makes it a liability.
By accrued, you mean?
That they've been working. Some of them are already retired, some of them are not yet retired. But even if they're not yet retired, they've been working such that there is a.
Is it what they've accrued so far, or is it what they'll also accrue in the future?
Oh, I'm sorry. That was your question. So it includes the total obligation that we legally will be owing over time.
Do I take a stab at this?
In the case of Pefers, obviously, it's accrued a bit the best, because we only have one active in, in Pefers. Pers is a difference. So the, the unfunded liability is the, from the present market value to, to the liabilities that we have, the benefits accrue by, by, based on the benefit that they are, the members are entitled to, and based on mortality rate of.
But accrued, here's one, here's one I'm trying to get clarification on. That they're going to accrue in the future, or that they've accrued today?
Well, they have accrued today, but obviously, in the case of, in the case of Pers, they continue accruing because they're working. So we don't know how many years those, those people are gonna stay with us, but, and then obviously, the Pers is different, Pefers is different than Pers, but it's the cruel bit. And now you look at, the, the actuaries look at mortality rates, you look at the average lifespan of a person, and then they calculate, and they give you more or less what the cost of providing those benefits will be.
So if I say, if I say you've got two point two billion dollars in unfunded liabilities, does that include future accruals if these employees will work?
Yes.
Does it include future accruals if these employees will work?
It is an actuarial projection of the future obligation. So it isn't actually a day-by-day calculus of each person's actual.
Does it include future accruals of liabilities?
Well, as I pointed out, not in Pefers, but the Calpers actuarials, at least usually the Calpers actuarials, when they bring them to us, they do bring, talk about what they project will be owing.
Does it include future accruals?
I would, I would think so. I would hope if, I, I would hope it would. In other, other ways, it would be in much worse shape than we are.
Does it include future?
Yes, it should.
No, it doesn't, folks.
Oh, my God.
I thought you guys understood this. The unfunded liability is the present value difference. Is, is the difference between the present value of the money you have in the bank.
And the liabilities.
And the future liabilities for the benefits that have already been accrued. It had future, if you shut off the system today, and these people work not another day in their life, you had two point two billion dollars in liabilities. And, I mean, I'm stunned, because I thought, I thought, you two are people who I really thought understood this. I, I, I'm just stunned, okay, because this is so fundamental. This is not about future accruals. This is not about what they may accrue in the future. This is what they've already accrued, past labor costs, for labor, it's already been provided. You know, and, and, you know, I mean.
And for obligations that are owing now.
You pay them in the future, but it's the present value of what you're gonna pay in the future for past labor costs. Not for future labor costs, for past labor costs. You might as well be saying.
It's not labor costs.
It, it, it's a.
It is a labor cost.
It, it is a labor cost.
Is there, I mean, but is there, is there pension benefits that they accrue, and they will continue to accrue? Some people, it's not best unless they have five years. Some people get, I mean, all, all the time. It's not automatic, so.
It is what has been accrued to date. It's for, it's the liability for what has been accrued to date. You, it could be pensions, it could be salary. I mean, it's really no different, and that's, that's the, that's the horrible thing about it. It's as if you went out and you borrowed money that you're gonna pay in the future for past salary.
What do you mean it's not different, because it's, if it's not pension or salary?
They already performed the work, is the point.
I, they already accrued it here.
You wouldn't go out, you wouldn't go out and borrow money to pay their past salaries.
We're not talking about salary, we're talking about their pension.
Right, but it's a past benefit.
I, I understand. Based on the years of services they provide.
They've already accrued. It's, it's, it's for, it's all for past labor costs, nothing in the future.
Based on the years of service that they.
They've already put in, already put in. I mean, I hold you two up as both as people who I think of as leaders in this issue, and it's like, I'm sorry.
Well, no, I mean, I think part of it is also we've been lately spending a lot of time on Pefers, and we get a lot of reports, both about the projected future as well as the current debt. But nonetheless, that doesn't change the fact that there is a huge net present value gap between the value of the actual assets and the value of the actual liabilities that are accrued today. Now, we also simultaneously get reports about projected future.
Okay, so let me ask the next question.
But, yeah.
You guys are not making your pay-go payment, or your ARC payments on your OPEP, correct? Correct?
That we're not making the payments.
You're only doing pay-go on your OPEP.
Yes.
This year. Yeah.
Have you ever paid your ARC, full ARC?
I think we have done it a few times, but.
What is the implication of not paying your full ARC on your unfunded liability?
The unfunded liability amount increases. Unless some miracle happens and the market skyrockets up, but, but it, the, the regular assumption would be that it, the increase, that the unfunded liability increases.
Everything else being held constant.
That the unfunded liability increases when that happens.
So why aren't you guys paying your full ARC?
Why? Because, because we just issued bonds, right, again, just now, this time around.
Well, you pay, you're issued bonds for Pefers.
Yeah, not for OPEB.
Not for OPEB. Why aren't you paying your full ARC on OPEB, Nancy?
Because that, because the majority of the people think that, that we have to, we'll be farther cut, we'll be, this, that, or the other, file cuts of benefits. That's the reason why we're not taking ten million or twenty million dollars to do it. Actually, that's what I wanted to do. That's the reason why I believe, even with Pefers, I believe that at some point, something has gotta give, and if we don't make it a crisis, then it will not happen. And obviously, especially our, our financial administration and the, and the city administrators do not wanna do that, because they don't, they don't propose that, obviously. They actually, they're ones that are really pushing for the, for the, for the bonds. They are actually the ones really pushing to the late payments, because they're the ones you have to make very tough decisions.
Should you pay your full ARC?
Absolutely. We should start, I don't know if we can actually pay the whole, the full payment, but it's definitely, we should, we should pay the ten or the twenty million dollars a year minimum to, to, to reduce the, reduce the liability, so.
Should you pay your full mark?
We absolutely should be paying more of it, and I actually introduced and passed a motion through the council that requires us to start that payment next year. Because if we look historically at the last bonding, the bonding that took place before I was on the council, the reason the unfunded liability went up when that happened wasn't just the bonding by itself. It was the bonding combined with the payment holiday. Now, of course, the bonding enabled the payment holiday, so the two are intertwined.
Okay, now, we're on OPEP, right? We're not on Pefers.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm asking for ARC on OPEB.
But the, so the motion that I made that passed that includes OPEB was to start devoting that money, which is about twenty million a year, to these very payments. And so we absolutely need to be moving in that direction where we're paying them. That, that is absolutely necessary and, you know, that is one of those costs that keeps going up. And as I mentioned, part of why it keeps going up is because health insurance premiums go up, right? So that's also a factor in those numbers. But I did vote for, pass and propose a, a motion to require those payments starting next year and have been very much advocating that we do not take a payment holiday.
You're taking a payment holiday right now, do you realize that?
Well, the one year.
On OPEB, you have been for quite some time. You have been on taking a payment holiday, on OPEB. By not paying your full ARC, you're effectively taking.
Right, that is, that is a payment, right.
There's a payment holiday. By doing pay go, that is a payment holiday on all the rest of it, right?
Right, because the, the amount of the unfunded liability continues to increase every year that that happens. And this was not something that my challenger proposed and I voted against, he didn't propose it. You know, and then I proposed this solution of to start paying it next year.
Did anyone vote for it?
The motion that I had? No, that was me, Schaff, Kurnahan, Nadel, and then Kwan had to break the tie and vote yes on that motion. He voted no on that motion.
You voted no on that motion?
That was because of the, of the, tied to the bonds, but tied to the.
Tied to the bonds, okay.
It, it was not part of the bond motion, it was an independent council action brought by myself, Kurnahan, Schaff and Nadel to independently set up a requirement to devote the bond savings from the expiry of the convention center bonds to the unfunded liability.
Yeah, but that you're devoting to Pefers, right?
No, no, actually the motion said OPEB and Pefers, actually.
Nick, should they be paying the full ARC?
Yes.
Should they be paying it full ARC?
Definitely. It's like deferred payments.
Okay, so then the next question is, I guess. I'm gonna start with you, Carol A.
Okay.
Assuming they start making these payments and start trying to address this unfunded liability, they're gonna have to give up something. Where should they give up?
Part of, I, I think it, it should be an overall strategy of paying down the debt and looking at how, where monies can be saved. I think, well, where monies can be saved. And where I would be looking is in terms of our AB three forty contributions, you know, making sure that, that we're not, we're not making any additional contributions into pension plans, that we're looking at how we can save on the, on the employee side. But also looking at, I think, renegotiating our measure Y to make it more palatable to the voters, so that we can actually pay our.
Yeah, but, but, but here, here's my question. To start paying down your unfunded liability and to start even paying the full ARC on OPEB is gonna require money out of the budget. That means everything else being constant, that you're gonna have to give up something. Where do you give up?
Okay, I would look at taking it, having a discussion about where we have measure Y currently and we haven't been looking at assessing the effectiveness, effectiveness of some of those programs. So how we can look at redirecting funds collectively, I think it's gonna be important, so.
I don't see how that's giving up something.
Something, okay. Well, this is gonna be tough, I mean.
It is tough, it's a tough question.
It is, it's a tough question.
It's the core, it's the core of the city financial problem.
Right.
Let me.
I think, okay. We have to look at, I think, some of our basic, almost some of our city services. How we operate them, what kind of looking more, I think, at a, at a zero-based budgeting process so we can see what, what are the core services that we need to provide our citizens? And prioritizing those services. Or, or those, yeah, prioritizing those services. And actually saying to the voters, I think having a conversation for me is very important. Saying we have gotten to this place and we have to move from this place.
Okay, so you can tell me, can you tell me anything you give up? Can you name one thing?
Can I name one thing?
Let me move on then.
Okay.
Nick, what would you give up?
Well, I think it's obvious that, you know, if you, you have this liability, you have two options. You have either raising revenues or cutting services. And I think that cutting services are probably going to be necessary if we're actually going to fulfill our obligations for these these unmet liabilities.
We agree on that, so, so what's the, what is the, what do you cut?
Um, I would look at cutting nearly everything. I would say ten percent cuts across the board except for crucial city functions, like I wouldn't cut police ten percent, obviously. You know, I think the interesting thing is, is that, you know, at a time when we really need to look at cutting services in Oakland, it seems like the government's doing the exact opposite, like, you know, they're gonna spend three point five million dollars studying the site for the Oakland A's and the Raiders over there, expanding the zoo. And these are all, you know, pet projects, it looks like, you know, of individuals on the city council. And I think that we need to look at those programs first, like, look at programs where they're looking to expand services, get rid of those, and then we can look and see like what the liability is, how much money we need from these other programs because it would, it would not be a great thing, for instance, to cut the libraries and things like that, but I think that's something that has to seriously be looked at. These are tough times.
Nick, what would you give up?
So one of the things that we've been doing for many years is sitting on a lot of unused buildings and unused properties that sit vacant and that people think that by keeping them vacant that we're saving money. But in fact, we end up having to spend money maintaining them, securing them, rehabbing them, as well as the lost opportunity cost of having no business activity going on in them. So that's one of the things I definitely think we need to do and that I've advocated for. Sell them, rent them out, not continue to sit on vacant, uh, unutilized properties.
If you sell them, it's one-time money.
If you sell them, the sales revenue is one-time money. The cost savings of the maintenance and upkeep is ongoing money. The revenue increase if a building.
So sales one-time money, the cost savings are, okay, here we go, on upkeep is ongoing.
And maintenance is ongoing, the revenue increase from having, say, a business that might have sales tax go into something that was empty would be ongoing, so that's one of the things that we need to do more of. Also currently.
Okay, so what would you do with the one-time portion of that money?
Well, one thing that we could do with it is use it directly for the unfunded liability. Because one of the good uses of one-time money is to reduce unfunded liability. And that is, as opposed to, say, pay for ongoing programs that then you have a problem with, right? So paying down the unfunded liability is a very good use of, of one-time money, which I would fully support doing. In addition, we.
So why, work ahead, yeah?
Yeah, we currently lose over ten million a year on the Coliseum deal. And I fully support changing that deal, entering into a new private partnership where we're gonna have private developers coming in on that site, doing a new development that's going to have shops and bars and restaurants and hotels around the rehabbed new Coliseum. And that, that opportunity to change the financial structure of that deal while creating something that will generate more revenue. So you'll get the jobs onsite, you'll get the sales tax revenue, the hotel revenue, as well as an opportunity to enter into a new contract.
That was so easy once you guys have done that by now?
It was never tried until I got on the council. There was not a push to do the work, to complete that deal, to do the Coliseum City project. Though credit is deserved to Council President Larry Reed, who has been wanting that to happen, has been speaking up about it. But let's be clear, the Raiders want to do the deal. There are private investors ready to come in who want to do the deal. They recognize that there is money to be made on that site and that if.
So what's holding it up?
Well, what was holding it up was that the city was not authorizing the. Now we've authorized it. And so now that there, the negotiations are going on with the Raiders at a staff to staff level. Fred Blackwell is in charge of that process on the city staff level. And so now that we've, that, you know, I've strongly advocated for and we voted to authorize moving forward on that project. I mean, when that, when the last contract was done, it's not just that what was actually in the contract was not so great, but there was no ancillary sales, so that's ten million a year.
Sell, sell up buildings, sell, uh, getting rid of the Coliseum laws. What do you, what, are there city services you're willing to give up?
I think we absolutely are gonna have to give up some city services.
What, what do you think you're gonna have to give up?
Well, I know that there is some work going on in terms of sharing some spaces between the city and the school district, so there's the potential for some city-owned properties to either become school district properties or joint properties that would take some of the.
That's not giving up city services, that's just redistributing where they're located and saving maintenance costs, which are not, not insignificant, but that's not a city service, okay?
But it's a cost-saving strategy, I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about cost-saving strategy, right? So that is a cost-saving strategy.
My question is, are there city services you're gonna have to give up?
I think it's entirely likely that we will, I mean.
And where do you think those might be?
And so, you know, I think one of the, the questions, so obviously maintaining vacant buildings doesn't sound like a city service, but it is something that is currently done. Another thing that people don't think of as a city service, right, is the opportunity to stand in a long line to do your business permit, your construction permit. Those long lines where so many of our city permits are not on the internet. We don't have self-certification for various construction projects that other cities allow self-certification. And so that is a city service that could be, and I think we really should look at seriously streamlining that.
Let me, let me go to Ignacio, then I'm gonna come back to you both for a second, okay? Ignacio.
I have to come in the Coliseum City dream that people are talking about. The reality is that nobody has stuck about money, who's gonna pay for it. And I can tell you that we are already different than any other city, okay? We're the ones that are paying for the EIRs, we're the aren't paying for that because three plus million dollars that, that, the majority of the council and the mayor allocated to even do the the EIR for the Coliseum City, so we paying for it, there's no, nobody's paying for it yet. The Raiders haven't put one penny yet, the A's haven't put one cent yet, it's just the city. And just wait for them to come back and see how much hundreds of millions of dollars they're gonna require, they're gonna ask us to flow bonds and all of those things that. So it's very easy to talk about it, but we'll see when it comes back. Secondly, I think that, first, I, I will, the city should not be in the business of, of managing buildings or owning. We have a hundred and seventy acres of Chabau Golf Course, we have the, we have the Metropolitan Golf Course. I think those, those things that are, should be, the city should not be in the business to do that. I will sell those, I've been trying to sell those.
Should sell off the golf course?
The property, the actual land we own. We should sell it, we should not have business doing that. And that will be hundreds of millions of dollars because it's very prime land, right next to the airport, right, right up in, up at the Oakland Hills. Number two, I think is gonna take salaries, period. I think should be no increases in salaries. I think that that's where you're gonna, you have to reduce costs. There's no way that we can do it any other way. You can talk about cutting this little service, that little service. Absolutely, employees have to pay more into the, into the pension, we have to reduce costs, period.
Let me just ask you one question on that, and then, well, no, go ahead and then I'll, I don't, I, yeah, yeah.
Period, that means that what I will cut is there will be no increases of pay and that will reduce costs, reduce payroll and an increase, and employees have to realize that, that the city cannot continue paying not only the, 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 the cost increase because of pension, but also to the medical benefits that, that they don't contribute at all. So I think those areas, it must happen, and that's what is, is real, it will have a real impact on the cost of doing business in the city and cost reductions, not only present, but future.
So in your budget deal that Rebecca switched and joined, you gave up the furlough day.
One day, yeah.
Somebody told me it's about a million bucks, does that sound right, that action?
About one point three, if you include one.
How could you guys afford that?
How can you?
How can you afford that? You're not making OPEB contributions, could you do that?
I think it was more, more of a, more of a, not a question of the afford, more of a question to to balance the fact that I think employees not only give up some concessions, but they're gonna have to give up more. That was, that was, and to, and to actually, plus a budget that in, that included some of the, some of the reductions and some of the areas that, that we need to pass. That, that was, that was part of the overall proposal, yes.
It was part of it, I just don't understand how you could afford it. You both voted for it, I don't understand how you could afford it.
Actually, I did more than voted for it, I.
You proposed it, you proposed it.
I, I put it to them, yeah.
You did buy the swing down in the end. I mean, how, how could either of you justify this? You, you're not making your OPEB payment, which means you're going deeper into debt. But you're increasing payments over a year by a million three.
Well, say that again?
But you're increasing your salary costs by a million three. I mean, I don't understand that, from either of you.
The understanding, the understanding is that you, we were able to put a budget together to balance a budget, if you wanna call it that, to recognize, I mean, that a lot of people do reductions, right? So in knowing that this is just a mid-cycle and knowing that in November we're gonna be in direct collective bargaining negotiations with, with these employees. I think that was the, that was the recognition of all the numerous days that they took off and that they gave up during the collective bargaining.
I mean, I totally, I totally understand, these people are working hard, they're giving back, I totally get that. But you both have said there are fiscal realities here, you know? Rebecca, you've said to me in the past about three years ago, you, you correctly described the unfunded liability as intergenerational theft.
Yes.
Okay?
Yep.
And I've used that, I quoted you on that many times.
Yes, nice, yes, yes, you have.
You know? How can you do more intergenerational theft? Which is the exact trade-off? By giving up a furlough day from the, giving up by the city's perspective, a furlough day that you couldn't afford, you're not paying your basic credit card payment over here, but you're giving ground over here. Now, don't get me wrong, I get it that these people are working hard. But at what point do you say? And you say, we're gonna have to give up services. At what point do you say? We can't do this?
I, I think that, I think we we're saying it maybe not to the extent that it should be said, but I can tell you that the number of furlough days, the number of reductions in the last, in the last negotiations with, with the unions, I, I think it was definitely different than what the two years or three years before. And by the way, which it has been several concessions.
I totally do, I, I mean.
So, so my point, so my point is, my point is that that's the reason why you're asking, what would you give up, what would you do in order to? To me, I think that they furlough versus a straight, no salary or reduction in salary is, is two different things. I mean, not different things, but it's, it's a way to reduce present costs.
Let me be cynical here, okay?
Excuse me, Nick, it's kinda freezing in here for me.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm.
You know, I'm embarrassed to say I actually turned it down a little bit.
In the thought that we'd get all hot.
Well, I was afraid that.
That we'd get real heated.
There we go, exactly, let's see if we can do a little more here.
Well, and look, my challenger can say he had good reasons for putting that in the, in his proposal, but then he has no business saying that he's tougher than me on holding the line on costs. My, my proposal was, saved more costs, my budget proposal saved more costs than his budget proposal. My propos, my proposal was, saved more costs, my budget proposal saved more costs than his budget proposal. Now, I'm happy to talk about procedurally-
Except that she dumped it.
Why I, in the end, uh-
Except that she dumped it.
But, but you keep saying that you are more fiscally tough than me, but your proposal, that you proposed, spent more money than the proposal that I proposed.
Well, otherwise, you voted for it, so.
Yes, which I'm happy to talk about that as well.
Okay. Do you both agree her proposal would have saved more money?
No, our proposal's-
I'm happy to get you a copy of it, I'm sorry I didn't bring it.
Did somebody done a side-by-side analysis?
Yeah, it's definitely spent less money than, than his proposal.
Can you both send me your side-by-side analyses, please?
Sure, yep, yes, yep.
Today, please, okay, if you could.
Today?
Yeah, today, I, 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 believe me, I mean, you know, I mean, we, we, we're done with Oakland today.
Okay.
We move on to Berkeley next week.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna get that right now.
Yeah. But, you know, I guess, you both want me to, well, okay, go ahead, give me the procedural, and why did you then? You know, this is because you were afraid of the stalemate and Kwan would come in, is this the argument?
Actually, no, the problem was not that, that Kwan would come in. The problem was that with the two budget proposals, um, so there was, originally, there was four people, right? We had me and Shaft and Kurnahan and Adele were supporting one proposal, and his crew was supporting another proposal, right? Uh, however, their crew had made clear to me that they were going to procedurally not let hours move forward at all because they were going to have one person abstain so that there wouldn't be a four-four. Uh, so that the budget that I was part of would not be allowed to come to a tie vote for the mayor to get to break the tie, uh, one way or the other. And that in fact, as this was a mid-year budget cycle adjustment, right? This was, this wasn't actually the two-year budget, it was a mid-year cycle budget adjustment, uh, that, that they were, uh, prepared to have nothing pass, and then we wouldn't be having the police academy now. And so we would continue to be having our policing numbers be reduced and reduced and reduced because if both groups' budgets had the police academies in them. And not passing either group's budget would have meant no, not adding the police academies this year, if we had stayed at stalemate.
What you're saying is this was a, what would the expression-
Hostage-taking? No, that's what they called it in Congress.
Yeah, it, it would be, eh, 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 what's the expression I'm looking for?
It would be worse for Oakland to not be having the police academies.
And how do you see it, Ignacio?
Wow. I see it as simply that, that you tell people you're gonna do one, some, one thing, you do another. I mean, that's exactly what my, my kind of-
No, how do you see what you guys, what, what were you guys gonna do if you couldn't give, if it was a four-four?
We're gonna start with our guns and, because we believe that our proposal was, was a better proposal, period.
What was gonna happen if we had a four-four stalemate?
Then, then the mayor will come in and whatever happens, happens. Period, that's what, that's, then you put, you put the mayor on the spot and we'll see what happens.
And what was the problem, getting the mayor on the spot?
Oh, that wasn't what was being said at the time was gonna happen, but rather that one person would abstain, there would be no four-four, the mayor, there would be no tie for the mayor to break. Right? This is a procedural thing with the council. If it's four, three, one, the mayor doesn't get to cast a vote. Uh, in which case, there's no budgeted option. Um, in which case, then we wouldn't have the police academies or the economic development to-
Right, I guess you could have just called their bluff and seen what happens, right? And because then presumably by next week, we would have screamed bloody murder, right? And you could have brought it back, I mean-
No, it's a good, it's a good strategy, it's a good strategic advice.
I don't understand how that justifies spending another million and three. You know, and, or at least testing those waters first.
In terms of letting that happen?
Yeah.
Letting, if there was gonna be obstruction, letting there be the obstruction, so that then you shine a light on the obstruction.
The question is whether you're gonna save, you know, I mean, you paid a, you paid a lot of money to not at least test it for a week or two.
No, I think, I think that's a good strategic, uh, advice to, to-
Okay, so let me come over here, you guys, if you, if you guys had either of these budgets to vote for, which way would you have gone?
I stepped out, I didn't know the budget.
Yeah, well, there were two budget proposals. I mean, essentially, one was Ignacio's and one was Rebecca's.
Okay.
They each had three people with them. Where would you have gone? On those two budget proposals? Or do you know the details?
I don't know the details of the proposal.
Do you, do you-
I would like to see the details of those budgets here.
Yeah. So, let's start over here. Give me your evaluation of the mayor's office and how she has dealt with the long-term, long, the big-picture debt.
Uh, well, you know, I used to serve with Jean, so I, I kind of-
On the scoreboard.
On the scoreboard, right, and so one of the things that, you know, we, uh, one strategy that we used was long-term planning, uh, which, um, gave us more of the long view of-
Rebecca, I'm talking about right now, today, how's Jean doing in terms of planning?
Well, I'm, uh, one of the strategies that we used was more the long-term. Rather than looking at a, just simply a two-year cycle, maybe, uh, extending that, looking at a five-year program where we have a two-year, uh, budget, um, uh, cycles, but within a five-year timeframe, which gives us-
So how's she doing at the city level now?
Uh, well, I think she's doing well in terms of, uh, uh, pushing forward the idea. Um, I think it's a new idea for folks to grasp. Um, but I think that in terms of where we are fiscally, I think if that approach had been, um, utilized more in the past, uh, it would have given, uh, the council more flexibility, it certainly would have allowed them to be more proactive as, um, things, economic, uh, economic, uh, elements changed. Um, and would also provide more engagement of the community process. Uh, the other issue is really looking at how, uh, passing measures really do impact, uh, the budget that we, we pay later. And I think we need to have more of a balanced approach in passing, uh, bond measures, and we need to educate the community at large as to what that means really down the road. Uh, you talked earlier about, you know, uh, putting burdens on future generations, well, we do that when we pass bond measures, uh, that, that have to be paid later. So I think we, we need to be more fiscally responsible in terms of putting that burden on our kids and saying that to the communities and, and tightening up our belt as we go along. Um, and not, um, feeling like, uh, we have access to all this, this pot of money, which then we have to pay Peter to pay Paul, and now we have-
Rob Peter to pay Paul.
Rob, oh, Rob Peter, are we robbing Peter? Well, we pay Peter, oh, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. Okay, so I think having more of, uh, that philosophical-
You thought I wasn't paying attention.
I did, but, um, having more of that kind of philosophy driving the budgeting process, uh, is, is healthier. Um, and it would allow us then, uh, the, to have more, uh, confi, it will allow the, the public to have more confidence in our ability to lead, be more proactive versus reactive.
Mick, what's your evaluation of Mayor Kwan's?
If, if there's something that Mayor Kwan, some action that she's taken to improve the budget situation, I'm not aware of it. Whenever I, um, see Jean Kwan speaking, it's oftentimes about, um, other issues like, you know, keeping the A's in Oakland or, um, or, you know, public safety issues, which are definitely important, but, um, is from my perspective, um, I would like to hear, I'd actually like to hear her answer that question, like what she's done. Obviously, the budget situation's not in a good place right now, and I can't think of anything that she's done to improve it. Maybe it would be, maybe her argument would be it'd be worse without her, but without, without, you know, additional information.
Rebecca, how's Jean doing in terms of the long-term budgets, in terms of the big picture of that front of my goals and such?
Well, I think, um, I think it's, the jury is still out on the long-term, uh, impacts. One of the things that, that I've asked for, and not just me, I mean, lots of people have asked for, is longer-term budget projections that when we receive- So, the, the way the budget process works, as, as you already know, is that, you know, generally speaking, the mayor's office releases a budget and then we haggle from there, right? So one of the things that I've been asking for and other people have been asking for is longer-term projections, so that we're not just looking at, at most usually two years at a time, and in a mid-cycle, we're often looking at one year at a time. So that's one of the things that I've asked for, others have asked for. She has said that that will be coming at some date in the next couple of months, perhaps, so, so we have, so that's something that after asking, I have, we have been told that, that they are preparing to do that, uh, but we haven't received that yet.
I'm sure it's next month.
The, the multi-year projection, right?
So what grade do you give her so far?
So far, uh, I'd have to say incomplete because the question about the longer-term impacts, uh, you know, we don't yet have those, and I think it's really important that we do the, the multi-year projections because so often the process is the one or two year at a time. In terms of things that she has done so far, I know she's been working on federal grant issues, but, but you're not talking about that, you're talking about only the budget, okay?
Ignacio.
Failure, totally, I mean, when it comes to really, uh, long-term fiscal, uh, plan, that, the, yes, we've been asking for, and she's been saying that it will, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, hasn't happened. Uh, same thing with the, with the comprehensive public safety plan, which by the way, which by the way, another difference in the budget of my colleague and, and mine was that we actually requested that the chief of police will present before September first a comprehensive, uh, crime plan to, uh, crime prevention plan for Oakland, and obviously, we know that we don't have one. Uh, so I think that, I think that the mayor has, especially when it comes to fiscal responsibility, has failed to provide any leadership on that.
Let me, let me double-check one thing. You voted against the Pefers' bonds.
Precisely.
You voted against the Pefers' bonds, you voted for them.
Correct.
How could you vote for the Pefers' bonds without a long-term budget plan?
I voted for it on the condition that the mayor cast the tie-breaking vote in the yes direction on the motion from myself, Shaft, Kurnahan, and Adele requiring that the payments be made. In other words, there did not be a payment holiday, that the savings, uh, from the bond debt expiry be used for Pefers and OPEB. And that was my condition for voting for it.
How do you know that they're gonna be able to make the payments in twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five?
Well, because the, the goal of my plan and the reason I said that my vote was conditioned on the vote for the motion that we passed was that in the past, the problem has been not only the bonding, but the bond, bonding plus the payment holiday, which then increased over time the amount of the unfunded liability. By setting the standard that there won't be a payment holiday, that we're gonna continue to make significant payments in the years between now and twenty-twenty.
Well, that'd be a payment reduction. That's the whole point of the thing, right? I mean, call that a hospital, I mean-
Right, but I'm saying that in, the, the one that was done last decade-
If there was gonna be a reduction, you want a bond, done the bonding, right?
Well, we also got a reduced interest rate compared to the past rates, but that is not enough. We need to do more than just get a better interest rate. We need to be making payments in the interim.
This is not just a steady stream payment schedule.
Right. No, I know, it's the one that increases at the end. But how much it increases at the end will be determined by how much we put aside between now and then.
Right.
The more payments we make between now and twenty-twenty-four, the less bad it will be in the out-years.
Okay, so my question to you is, how can you make that assumption or make a vote that's, knowing that, with the assumption that it can be, that's affordable when you don't know the long-term budget projections?
Well, we, I mean, and, and I have been part of, you know, demanding the long-term budget projections. In the meantime, the action that I was able to get passed was to set aside the money-
Again, I gotta ask-
No, you're saying, why not say it has to be there before the vote on the bonding?
Exactly, I mean, if ever there was a time to stand up and say, "Hell, no," that was it.
Well, I think arguably there was a time in nineteen ninety-seven to say, "Hell, no," to increase in the bond debt to pay for other things, but that's obviously-
Obviously, obviously there were mistakes made in that.
That was already done, but so-
My question is, my question is, look, Rebecca, the rap on you is you're not willing to get real tough with, and rub, and rub any, you know, wrestle any feathers with people like Jean and others in a way that demands that they produce, that you try and keep relations smooth everywhere. And that you've passed over a couple of key votes, this one being one of them, where frankly, you had the leverage to say, "Show us the, show us the money first."
Right, and so what I used that leverage to do was to insist with the mayor that I would not vote for this unless she cast the tie-breaking vote, which she did do, for our motion, me and the four council members' motion, to require the Pefers and OPEB devotion of the funds starting next year.
Yeah, but you, but you don't know how that-
No, I know, there's more things we need to continue to fight for.
You know, that doesn't, you don't know how those numbers fit in to the big picture.
Well, we know that it's about twenty million a year more that will go to Pefers and OPEB. No, I'm not saying it's enough, I'm not saying that getting that thing done-
You don't know whether it's enough or too much, you have no clue.
I'm not saying that getting that done-
I know, because I've tried to crunch those numbers, you cannot do it.
I'm not saying that getting that done is all we need to do. It's not all we need to do, we need to do more than that. I'm saying getting that done was a bigger move in the right direction than had been done by anything that had been done in the previous several years.
I would say on net it wasn't. When you take-
In terms of what?
To take the Pefers' bonds and that together, you're, you're indebted, you're, you're indebted yourself and you have no idea how it's gonna play out on the backend. So rather than bite the bullet now, and, you know, and maybe there's a good reason, policy-wise, and I, but you don't know what your backend cost is.
Oh, yeah, no, we're not done solving it, but getting the commit-
You just made it worse, backend.
Well, getting the commitment to the interim payments is part of how we start moving in that direction. It's not how, it's not how we finish moving in that direction. It's just part of how we start moving in that direction.
You wanna weigh in, guys?
See, that's the problem with, you know, if you, you, you went, if you, you would have been on the Rockridge debate, you would have heard Rebecca Kaplan saying, "And to answer a question on the budget and the finances of the city," you would have heard-
But still, but they're still different.
But you would have said, saying how great things are. We got more self-stacks money, we have more, more rep, more, uh, uh, real estate transfer tax, everything is rosy. She didn't even mention pensions, she didn't even mention anything, no liability of any kind, okay? This was the time to really, to send that message. Why? Because that was, it was an opportunity to say, to really get into a crisis mode so we can make that forty-three million dollar payment. And the reason why Rebecca and everybody else was said, because they had to cut forty million dollars, and there's no way we could do it, right? But we had a twenty million dollar, supposedly a twenty million dollar surplus, and that's from, according to the city administrator, when we voted on that budget. It's just, it's no willingness to really make the tough decision, that's the reason why we continue.
So why didn't your budget proposal have that in it?
I voted, I voted no, because it wa, it was an opportunity to do it, and obviously, we didn't do it, so.
But you didn't submit a proposal to do it?
Wait a minute, they voted, they voted no, yes, it is.
To pay the forty-three million from some other source, you never submitted a proposal for that.
Rejecting the, rejecting the bonds would have, would require the city to make the forty-three million dollars. It would have required us to make that payment, Rebecca, and you know it, so we're gonna have to make that payment.
Rebecca, here's the question that we've asked, and we said in the twirl, and I said in the column, okay? How can you float the bonds before you have long-term budget numbers?
Right, and so I made a move to get us a piece of the way there. It doesn't get us all the way there, I'm not saying we're done fixing it, and I'm not saying-
You don't know what you did.
Well, we, I understand that we still need the long-term budget projections. But committing these funds to Pefers and OPEB is one piece of the solution. Obviously, it's not the only piece.
Everybody was planning to commit those funds, that was all part of it, uh, of, of the game plan. I'm glad you memorialized it, don't get me wrong. But what I'm trying to understand is how you can commit to bonds through twenty-twenty-six when you have no idea how those payment schedules and those payments fit into the big picture of the city payment schedules. I, I don't understand that. You know, I tried to look at those numbers myself and tried to see how it plays out. And absent a solid proj, solid budget numbers from the city long-term, you can't do it intelligently. So how can you justify floating those bonds without those numbers?
I believe we still need to take that next step, and-
I get that, you, we agree.
I made an agreement.
I get that, you, we agree, I think everybody in this room agrees we have to take that next step. But how could you take that?
If the mayor would support taking the first step and committing as a official binding document.
But she didn't commit, she didn't commit to, she didn't commit, she, she didn't give, she didn't give you the numbers you need to intelligently evaluate, you did it blind. You did it blind. You committed to bonds without knowing.
We did it less blind than the ninety-seven and less blind than the two thousand and three and less bl- blind, look, I know that in three years, I haven't fixed everything that's gone wrong for thirty years. But this was less blind than every prior vote on this matter. And by getting the mayor's agreement to vote for the motion, we took a step. It's not the last step, it's not the end. And I have been quite, uh, clear with her that I want the long-term numbers. She's now said they're coming imminently. Um, so it was less blind than every previous vote. Every previous time this has been done, it's been done with a full payment holiday and no long-term projections of any kind. So I'm not saying it's perfect, it's not, and I'm not saying the work is done. I'm saying it was less without the protections than any of the previous similar efforts that Oakland has done. And that that was something that I insisted upon and that, a vote that I did get. Now, that doesn't mean we're done, that doesn't mean that's the end of the story. That doesn't mean we don't need the long-term projections, which hopefully are coming, uh, shortly. And that we're gonna need in the next budget round to do more. And so when we talk about streamlining.
So, so, so when I, when I sit here cynically and I hear this, I say less blind than before.
Is that like in the, the world of the blind, the one-eyed man is king or some, something, is that?
I guess what, I guess what I'm trying to, I guess what I'm trying to think is.
And I don't wanna be insulting to persons with disabilities or sightless, I mean, we're not, no, no insult intended to.
I understand.
They don't write that?
We got that, Rebecca, okay? Okay, what I'm trying to understand here is it seems to me that all this debate of the last three or four years and everybody's saying, as we've editorialized and others have been talking, oh, we finally get it. And I look at this and I say, you guys don't get it. If you did this, I mean, okay, it's a little better than what you did before, you knew a little bit of the puzzle. But that wasn't the point, the point was to know the whole puzzle.
Yes.
And, and Jean has been talking about providing that puzzle for a year and a half. I don't, I really don't understand why you guys let this sit that long. Why, why you put up with letting, letting her go for a year and a half without that and giving her that?
Because it would have required for us to make a forty-three million dollar payment and, and that's the reason why they're just to do it, uh, so, so we're here today, so.
But you never submitted a proposal for making that payment.
Again, again, if we rejected the bonds, Ms. Kaplan, would have required the city to make that payment. They told us that open several times, it will require for the city to make the payment. That mean that before anything, we have to pay and whatever we have left, that will, that will be the reason.
Probably, right? They would have forced cuts or would have forced Jean's office to start paddling a little faster on this, right?
Perhaps, I mean, it's, they could have done that with it, it's.
They've had a year and a half, Rebecca, they've had a year and a half there.
Mm-hmm.
I mean.
No, look, I mean.
You know, I mean, you guys, there was your leverage to say.
And my prediction is, my prediction is we'll not see that this year.
Well, they claim it's coming in October.
She, I mean, I, I, every, I follow she says imminent, so we'll see.
But I've promised this before, I think this is the third time we've been told it's imminent.
Yeah.
Again, by my count.
Yep.
Look, we need to break this up, but, and I'm, and I'm sorry that a lot of folks have been over here.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I also wanna make sure, you know, my challenger here says that the chief never released the public safety report and he doesn't serve on the public safety committee, so he might have missed it.
The chief never.
He said that, he said, I've been demanding a public safety report from the chief of police and I never got it and you don't need that.
You don't have to worry about that, that's not where I'm going.
Cause, cause it is here.
That's not where we're focusing right now, okay? Public safety comes in on this as to how you get money for public safety, that's how we care, that's what we care about here, you know? Um, I gotta tell you, and Habsel and I and Steve are gonna have to talk about this, but I'm, we're real torn. You know, we're, we're real torn trying to figure this out. Uh, because, um, candidly, you know, I mean, two of the smarter people in a city government, they sort of operated blindly for a long time. And, you know, I've been critical of both of you for different things today, okay? And I, you know, I don't know where we're gonna go, okay? But, uh, whichever way we go, I do sincerely believe that you both understand this issue to the most part, although I was a little bit disappointed in the unfunded liability. But that's okay, you know, you know, um, and so how can we, you know, we want leadership on this issue, we want really hard-ass leadership on this issue. And yeah, there's no question, Ignacio was part of the mistakes in the past. But he has been a lot tougher and I would argue tougher than you a bit of late on some of this stuff.
Except that just this year, his budget proposal was more.
And then you have the budget proposal issue, which does concern me. So, so, you know, I mean, these are the things we're weighing. Send me the budget proposal comparison, if you want, send me one, you know? Both of you, please understand that this isn't an easy decision. I mean, you know, we endorsed you last year for mayor. We've respected both of you greatly on these issues. This is not an easy decision. Okay, I just, you know, so whatever we end up just doing, you know, just know that, you know? Uh, and whatever, you know, whichever one you ends up there, I hope you'll really keep pushing this harder. Because from our perspective, this city's on the verge of going off the hook. Two point two billion dollars.
And rise.
And rising, two point two billion dollars. It's huge. It's just huge. And that doesn't account for what was in the budget document about the infrastructure, unfunded liability, the liability. But at least that's for something substantive, substantive going forward.
Yes.
That's not for past labor costs. That's not for the steak dinner you're already in.
Yep.
Okay? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I just, I had to say that to both of you because I respect both of you.
No, this is, this is something that you spend so much of your time.
I respect both of you, well, it's something, but it's something, both of you, I just, you know, I highly respect both of you on this issue in general, and so this is, you know, and this, so this is not an easy, you know, this is not easy for us to figure out, and we will figure it out, obviously.
Yes. Well, and, and of course, you know, one of the things we didn't get to is how we actually grow the economy, which I know.
You know something, you can't grow yourself a way out of this.
Well, not out of, not out of the unfunded liability, but in terms of future revenue projections.
Yeah, you can, you can, you can tweak it on the margin.
I mean, growing the economy does not reduce the unfunded liability, but it does increase future revenue.
It does, it does, but, but it, but it, but the marginal different, but it's on the margin compared to the unfunded liability.
Right, if we were to be at the average of a California city in terms of retail retention in the city, that would be worth roughly twenty million a year more to the city. So, not twenty million a year more in sales, but twenty million a year more in tax revenue to the city, uh, every year. So that's, again, not the whole ballgame, uh.
And to all of you, thank you all for running. Thank you for being involved with it because I do think you guys sitting on, sitting out there pushes them along and keeps them more aware that they can't take anything for granted. And so I think it's important. You know, you guys, you guys taking this seriously, so we appreciate it.
Yeah, we do, thank you.
Thank you for.